We will call to order the regular meeting of the Folsom City Council for Tuesday, October 8, 2019. If the clerk would call the roll, please.
Councilmember Gaylord.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
Aquino.
Here.
Howell.
Here.
And Kozlowski is absent.
Okay, if you will all join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Do we have any agenda update, Mr. City Attorney?
None to none, Madam Mayor.
Okay. And so we have, we will move on to business from the floor, and we have a couple of blue cards in here. First one up is Steve Hindy. And then it will be Robert Sanger and Chris Clark.
Sure.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to, the opportunity to speak. My name is Steve Hindy, and I am the founder and president of Illinois-based Showing Animals Respect and Kindness, or SHARC. In July 2018, a bucking horse was seriously injured at the Folsom rodeo, which was produced by Cotton Rossar's Flying U Rodeo Company. As you probably know, a veterinarian is required at all California rodeos. What you may not know is that those vets have virtually no power or authority at those events. In this case, the veterinarian was not allowed to do an assessment of the horse who couldn't move his hind legs. The vet couldn't give proper care for what she described in her report as "suspect hip fracture or spinal cord injury." The vet was only allowed to pump the horse up with painkillers, which was needed twice because the injury was so serious and the horse was suffering so much. Cotton Rossar's people told the vet that they were taking the horse to the Rossar Ranch for treatment. That trip of more than an hour inevitably caused enormous and needless suffering to what was almost certainly a doomed animal. The vet reported the injury to the California Veterinary Medical Board, as is required by law. By law, any subsequent treatment also had to be reported, but there was no follow-up report because Cotton Rossar made the horse simply disappear. The public has a right to know what happened to the horse, but the rodeo people have been unresponsive. I have a copy of the vet report, which was filed by the onset site vet. We'll give you a copy. That vet has since moved out of the state, and our numerous attempts to communicate with her have gone unanswered. This isn't the first time that Cotton Rossar's Flying U Rodeo has made injured animals disappear, but our request of this council pertains only to this horse. An email was sent to the California Veterinary Medical Board by a SHARC investigator. The email laid out the incident in detail and requested answers as to what ultimately happened to the victim. Unfortunately, the veterinary board has chosen not to respond, and that's why I'm here with you tonight. Before much more time passes and before this disturbing story and its possible illegal cruelty are forgotten, we'd like to know what happened. If Cotton Rossar has nothing to hide, he will be more than happy to provide a clear, accurate, unambiguous statement along with supporting proof. If Mr. Rossar is unwilling to come clean, I question if he should ever be allowed to produce another rodeo in Folsom. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up is Chris Clark and Robert Sanger.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, councilmembers. Robert Sanger with the Folsom Cordova Community Partnership, Chris Clark. We're here to share about two fundraising event that's going on in the near future. And just to share with you, the Folsom Cordova Community Partnership, we operate a family resource center and a job center that provides services to the Sacramento County area, including Folsom. We provide supportive services to families as well as job employment opportunities and workforce development, skill development for the community. And one of the ways that we provide these services is to provide a fundraiser in the terms of Whole Lot of Brews. You probably are very familiar with this, and Chris Clark is going to share a little bit about that event.
All right. Thank you, Robert. Good evening. Yeah, we are actually heading into our seventh year of Whole Lot of Brews. Actually, that event has grown. For those who remember the event, it started out at the Whole Foods parking lot. It has since matured and growed, have grown. Now we have it at the Andy Moran Sports Complex, and actually, it is one of the only indoor beer festivals in the region. We're very proud of that, to have it inside. Whole Lot of Brews will actually include, not only our microbrews and breweries from across the region, however, I mean, also we'll have restaurants and caterers. So those who have been to beer events before, you always notice food trucks. Our food is included. So we're looking forward to having that event. It's actually going to be a fun evening, a fun day, because we do have what we call another inaugural event, our Whole Lot of Cornhole, which I'll let Robert talk a little bit more about. But we hope to see you at that event. We thank you for your unwavering support for our agency. So thank you so much.
And if anyone would like to get tickets, they can go to wholelotofbrews.com. Tickets are $40 for general admission, $60 for VIP. VIP will get them in an hour early and a special tasting glass included. And we're also excited to share with you that we are doing a first annual Whole Lot of Cornhole Classic. So as you may be aware, the game of cornhole has become extremely popular. If you're at a bar or a brewery, you see people, you know, taking a bean bag and tossing it onto a wooden board with a hole cut out in it, and we're taking this opportunity to create a fundraiser tournament. It'll happen the same day as Whole Lot of Brews, so October 19th. It'll happen from 12 noon to about 5 o'clock. It'll also happen at the sports complex, and we're really excited about introducing that to Folsom and making sure that, you know, the residents of Folsom have a fun activity that can also raise money for a vital nonprofit in our community. They can go to wholelotocornhole.com to register. It's $60 a team, and there's going to be $1,000 of guaranteed prize money for our advanced divisions. So it's really exciting, and, you know, cornhole has become so popular, and we just want to take the opportunity to engage the community, give them something fun to do if they enjoy cornhole, and also raise money. So, thank you.
Thanks, guys.
Thank you.
And I have no other request to speak in business from the floor, so we will move on to Item 6A, scheduled presentation from the Greater Folsom Partnership regarding
Good evening, everyone. Mayor, it's nice to see you. Ernie, it's very nice to see you. I'm glad you're here. My name is Claudia Cummings, and I am the Chair of the Greater Folsom Partnership. And tonight, we are here, first of all, I hope all of you took a few moments to see the lovely model that's out in the lobby. I know that Will will be telling you a little bit more about it and showing you some slides in regards to that, but it's just really a great visual, which sometimes is better than words, for sure. Tonight, we are presenting the Folsom River District Visionary Community Outreach Report to you, the council. Just over a year ago, the council approved the Folsom General Plan 2035, which includes language regarding a Folsom River District and supports the appropriate enhancement of the city's riverfront area for current and future residents. The report we are presenting tonight contains valuable data regarding community thoughts on what such a district could look like. This information can be used and when the city decides to purchase, pursue, a river district planning process as allowed for under the new general plan. I also would like to introduce the River District Organizing Committee that has worked for years on this, and I'm just going to have them stand real quick, because you've all worked so hard. It's nice to get a little recognition. Thank you. Oh, hey, Bob. Along with that, though, we've had over 250 residents, business owners, and stakeholders for their participate, well, I thank them for the participation in the five-month process that provided an opportunity to share ideas and different points of view regarding the future of Lake Natoma and the American River in our community. The input is included in Will's report. The organizing committee looks forward to working with the city, the community, and other involved governmental agencies as part of our future efforts to advise and advance a river district in Folsom and will continue to advocate in support of this enhancement. With that, please let me introduce Will Kempton, who will go over in more detail. And this man knows the river like the back of his hand. I don't know how many years you've been running on this trail, but with that, he does bring a lot of insight, so with, please, Will, come forward. Thank you.
Thanks, Claudia.
How about those 49ers?
Niner Pat Super Bowl.
Yeah. Unlike Claudia, I am going to need assistance on the, on the electronics tonight, as I don't do this very well, but your staff has been extremely helpful in allowing me to set up. But I want to say, Madam Mayor, members of the council, Will Kempton with the Greater Folsom Partnership, tonight representing the River District Organizing Committee. Many US cities of comparable size to Folsom have recently invested in their waterfront to provide greater access and utility for the public. For the past several years, the Greater Folsom Partnership has conducted study missions to locations around the country where communities have recognized the public benefits of proximity to rivers and lakes and have worked to provide enhanced access and use for these amenities. We now have a unique opportunity to do the same. So I wanted to start the presentation this evening with some aerial views of the Folsom waterfront that roughly correlate with the proposed boundaries of a river district as we have proposed it in the city of Folsom. And viewers can get a sense of this awesome amenity in the heart of our city and understand its attraction. So if Pam can, I knew you would have to help.
That's okay. So you just leave the arrow key, or if you want me, you can tell me, and I can answer this way. So just the arrow key this way every time you want to—
But the video.
Oh, the video first.
Yes.
It's embarrassing not to have these skills. And while I ask Pam to come back and help me go to the slideshow. So Folsom's new general plan 2035, as you know, calls for consideration of a river district master plan for Folsom's riverfront area. According to the plan, and I quote, "The riverfront areas of Folsom are great assets that are currently underutilized. While they offer recreational opportunities for Folsom residents, access to the river is limited. Folsom has the opportunity to make the river a more integral part of the community fabric by turning its attention to the river and increasing access," end quote. With this vision, we truly can create an iconic amenity here in Folsom, one that will energize both public and private areas surrounding the American River and the Lake Natoma waterfront. A river district will help provide community connectedness for all segments of our population and will serve as an attraction for visitors and tourists as well. While our waterfront is a natural asset valued by all stakeholders, it is an amenity that is underutilized by residents and visitors alike due to limited access, and this is a major obstacle to achieving the potential that a welcoming river district can provide. With the submission of this report to you tonight, the city can begin a process to define that potential with a diverse mix of passive and active recreation, tours, and activities. Tonight, we can launch an effort to help open the door to Folsom's future. We have provided you a copy of the Folsom River District Visioning and Community Outreach Report, which was prepared by the River District Organizing Committee with a considerable amount of public engagement. We hope the report will help spark community interest in the process and provide the city with a starting point in terms of public input if the council chooses to pursue such a plan. This slide outlines the river district boundaries proposed by the committee and presented during our outreach process. And you can see that the boundaries that we show on this map to the east side, which would be to the right side of the viewers, were not included in the, in the aerial photos, but they are integral parts of the river district as well. A plan should be based on widespread community engagement, but since much of the land surrounding our waterfront is owned or managed by the US Bureau of Reclamation and the California Department of Parks and Recreation, it is essential that the city coordinate with these agencies in any planning effort. Seventy-seven percent of the land in our proposed river district is owned or managed by federal and state agencies, 7% is owned by the city, and 16% is in private ownership. This slide shows who owns what along the waterfront, including city and private ownership. With the city's planned effort to update the zoning code, working with private property owners within a river district could allow for new uses that enhance and complement the lake. The report we are presenting tonight includes a summary of the data and input gathered during a community outreach effort which took place between March and August of last year. During that timeframe, we conducted four open forums involving more than 250 participants. While this is an excellent public response for this kind of exercise, it is important to note that the information in the report represents a snapshot in time from a small but engaged slice of the city's population. There should be no speculation that this information we included in the report constitutes a complete menu of prospective uses or defines all the issues that require consideration for the waterfront, but it is a starting point for the discussion. At our kickoff event, attendees shared thoughts about the opportunity to reimagine and reposition the American River and Lake Natoma as more of a front door to the city rather than a backyard resource. Participants acknowledged that Lake Natoma is also uniquely a man-made reservoir for the region, making the preservation of this resource a key priority. And I think all of the members of our committee and the people that participate in this process understand the importance of preserving this, this resource. So throughout the process, we acknowledge that any proposal for a river district within the jurisdiction of state parks and the Bureau of Reclamation will need to be consistent with policies of the Folsom Lake State Recreation Area's General Plan and Resource Management Plan. Following the kickoff event, we held three visionary or visioning workshops. The purpose of the workshops was to introduce the concept of a river district, to begin the public discourse on a potential district in the city, and to gather input from the community on what a river district should look like. With the help of our consultant, Ascent Environmental, we were actually able to record most of the input and quantify levels of preference from the workshops. We ended up with 17 identified amenities, which were judged by level of interest and support, with a selected scope for each amenity, in other words, the size of an amenity relative to its surroundings or use, and consistency with the state park's general plan. Of the 17 amenities considered, considered in this report, 11 were deemed to be consistent with that state plan. The next series of slides will give you an indication of the type and scope of the amenities considered and the percentage of participants who were interested in those amenities. The numbers that you'll see on these slides represent the numbers who were either supportive of this amenity or said maybe for this amenity. While there are suggestions for amenities and activities which are not included in the state master plan as part of our process, each of the amenities we are displaying in this presentation, as I said, were deemed to be consistent with the state plan. An overlook, 85% interested. Let's go back to the other one to say the Nature Center, which was our, our top vote getter in terms of interest on the part of the participants. The overlook. And again, remember, these photos represent the scope. We offered four different scopes for each of the amenities, and so the people that attended these workshops were able to pick the scope which best suited them and was most compatible with the waterfront. A museum, also highly, highly favored. Visitor Center, 82% interest. A cultural center. Small amphitheater. Glamping or camping, this is luxurious camping. That doesn't look very luxurious to me, but that's what the group, the group suggested. Nonetheless, that's a popular amenity in natural areas. And a boathouse, and this was, I was very pleased, frankly, personally, with this particular rendition of a boathouse because it does fit in with the, with the natural environment very, very effectively. And a food concession. Water taxi, 54% interest, and the, these would be operating, it's electric boats, obviously given the restrictions on the, on Lake Natoma. And then boat tours that could be conducted. And all of these amenities had over 50% support, interest, or people who said this might be an amenity that they would, that they would consider. So in conclusion, the River District Organizing Committee is pleased to transmit our community outreach report to the city council for consideration. The city's new general plan lays out a goal. It's Land Use Element 5.1, and again, to quote, "Support the gen, of the appropriate enhancement of Folsom's riverfront areas for current and future residents in order to increase public access, recreational opportunities, and economic development in consultation with federal, state, and regional land management agencies." That's the end of the quote. This report can serve as a first step in meeting that goal if the council chooses to consider the development of a river district master plan. So with respect to next steps, we respectfully encourage the council to move forward with consideration of a river district master plan consistent with the general plan update. This will require the allocation of resources, and we know those are scarce, to conduct the necessary staff engagement and an appropriate public outreach effort. Consideration of a river district master plan will require extensive coordination with state parks and recreation, the Bureau of Reclamation, and the Sacramento County Regional Parks Department. And a formal process ought to be put in place to accomplish this requirement as soon as practicable. The city should also support the timely development and funding of related state parks and recreation proposals that are contained in the 2010 Folsom Lake State Recreation Area General Plan. And so, members of the council, the organizing committee looks forward to working with you to continue the dialogue regarding a river district and helping to involve stakeholders, the broader community, and the appropriate governmental agencies in establishing and implementing a vision for Folsom's river district that will truly open the door to our community. So thank you for your attention this evening, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Will. Anybody get any questions for Will?
Maybe comments.
Comments are okay. I do have one request to speak, so do you want me to have the speaker, or you want to go first?
Yeah, no, somebody else can speak.
Okay. Betsy Wyland submitted a, a blue card. Don't touch any buttons, Will. Come on up, Betsy.
He didn't get elected, did he?
It is nice to see you, Ernie.
Thank you.
Thank you, City Council, for your time this evening. My name is Betsy Wyland, and my organization, Save the American River Association, was one of the stakeholders that participated in the outreach events that were held. And so I just have a couple of comments to make. There was, you know, there is a lot of trepidation and concern surrounding this effort, and so people do want to stay engaged with it. And I would like to ask that the, the organizing committee use the email list that they, that they collected during the process to let people know when, for instance, they're going to do presentations, or they're going to go, go before bodies for approvals and things like that. It would be very, very helpful to keep the people who were interested and who spent a lot of time attending those workshops, keep them engaged and informed. So I would make that request to the committee, please. And I would also like to, I was very glad to hear that the, that the committee add the fact that they promised the community that they would not only work with state parks and the Bureau of Reclamation, but that they would also work with our county regional parks because the river district, or Lake Natoma anyway, is, is covered under the American River Parkway Plan, Chapter 10. So we need to coordinate heavily with regional parks to make sure that that's all copacetic. And then I'd just like to remind everybody, it was, it's always interesting to me to watch these presentations because, for instance, the short film, which was absolutely beautiful, if you'll notice what it, that those films and pictures always focus on, they focus on the natural environment. It's always the beauty of the natural environment that is highlighted. For instance, there wasn't one picture of any development along Lake Natoma, the project that you just put in below Old Town Folsom. That wasn't highlighted in the picture. It was—
What development are you talking about, Betsy?
You know, the one carried the Lake Natoma Enhancement Project, the—
Trail?
The Trail Project. For instance, that was something that you were all very proud of, and you built and, and put it in, and that wasn't, you know, those kinds of things are never shown. It's always that natural environment, the beauty, the peace, the serenity. So I just want to keep that in front of everybody's mind as we're thinking about this. Thank you very much for your time this evening. Greatly appreciated.
Thanks, Betsy. Ernie?
Okay, I'll try to get through this as much as I can. First of all, Will, this is a very good product. Okay? It tells you, you're going to know what you want to do with the river district, what you're describing is in here. Okay? But I want to start with what Becky said. You could have stopped at the first couple of films and said, "That's it. That's what we want, the river district. The beautiful, natural thing." My problem with this, as the years I have on this council, is I'm very friendly with many, for 35 years, but I don't necessarily agree with this idea at all. Okay? But I'm, I'm not too old to change my mind. But I grew up in Wisconsin in a nature situation, in farmland, and trails, and lakes, and streams. So I'm pretty certain I'd enjoy the nature thing. And when I see some of the things that I see in here, I am definitely afraid that once we open the door to economic development on that river, and we start making the traffic heavy with the things we're talking about, river taxis and tours and, and restaurants on the side and some, all the other things, we're going to lose the nature of what we have, the natural value of what we have. Now, if somehow magically we can keep it together and do something, maybe there's, maybe there's an avenue. Right now, I see this only in my mind, and again, I can be changed. Right now, I see this only in my mind, and again, I can be changed. It's economic development, and it's commercialization of our waterfront, and if it starts here, it's going to go all the way to Sacramento. I don't find that, you know, and you say, in your closing remarks, you make the remark, "It's the opening of the future of Folsom." You don't want to open the future and destroy the past, and that's what I think this has other tendencies to do. We have a historic district. When I came here, it was a historic district. There's homes that we talked about, and quaint stories that we went to. Now, it's not the same. I know things change, and you can't always stay the same. But if we keep doing things of this nature and being, and I don't fault you, you guys are economic people, you're very good, and you know what you're doing. Your DNA is that way. My DNA is not that way. So I'm going to, I'm going to champion it for the people. I know I've attended all three of your workshops, and I enjoyed them. And I think that what, what the stats show as to what the people wanted, I think is true, and I think that will carry on to the 80,000 people in this town, even though there's only 250 representation. We don't want no hotels on that, that river. We don't want no condos or apartments on that river. We don't want no restaurants in the river. I say "we," well, me, we, and the people I know that don't want it. I can, I'm not speaking for the world, obviously. But that's the things that I think we have to keep working on. And I may take issue with you, the way you read the, the new plan, the general plan. I may not read the words or interpret the words in my mind like you interpret them, as this is, this is a city that wants to go this way. No, I think we put it in there to give an option. And I purposely, as you, Will, you know, you're very helpful in working with me on this, to put it in that it was not an open challenge for you to go and start doing this. It's only an idea. At some time, the city may or may not take it up. Okay? It's, it's, it's the greater community development. It's your idea. It's not the city idea. Okay? I'm not saying it's a bad idea, but it's your idea. It's not the city idea. It wasn't created in the city, wasn't approved by the city, and the city, I say the council sitting up here. It wasn't disapproved, but it wasn't approved. So all I say is, I think in the, in the future, when we consider this, if we, you know, I enjoy going over Rainbow Bridge and looking to my right and seeing all the kayaks out there, and people under the boats out there, and, and kids on rocks and all that. I enjoy that. That's, that's refreshing. I don't think I had to see commercialization down that thing. Now, working with state parks, that's, that's always been something we have tried to do over the 30 years I've been here, and never been more successful. That alone will be advantageous to improve Negro Bar, okay? And improve some of the areas that they own. Maybe there is some of this that can fit in there, as long as it doesn't commercialize the waterfront, the nature, the trees, you know? I don't think they know I'm here representing, there's probably hundreds and hundreds of animals out there, and birds, and everything else, that they can't talk. I'm talking for them. You commercialize that front, there's no place for them to go. And we, we can't do that. That's not the nature of our society in the American way. Okay? Those expect us to defend them and protect them and provide them a safe living, a home. So, right now, that's my, you know, I, it's a well-done thing, and it gives me a lot to think of and to talk about. Me and Will sat on the park commission for years, and so we know how to negotiate. So, but right now, my, my tendency is, it's not broke. It's a beautiful amenity for this place, and if you see when 300, 400, there's 300, as I understand, members in the kayak club in this area. And when you see a couple hundred of them out on that lake, that's a beautiful sight. Okay? And that's good enough for me. Now, I think, I understand, you have businesses in, in Old Town, they're going to have to understand there's limitations. Because not only do you, if you, say you bring an amphitheater, you bring something, you know, you all went out to many, the Chambers went out to many towns. You went to San Antonio, look at the waterfront. You went to Portland, look at the waterfront. You went to Seattle, look at the waterfront. Those are big cities. My gosh, we're 80,000 going to 120 in 20 years. We're not 600, 800, we're not that. We don't need what they got. And I was in San Antonio a lot. I was stationed in San Antonio. I know the riverfront, it was nice for a while, but it got polluted as hell, and they had us clean it up real bad. So all I'm saying is, I, I think we've got to stay within what we can do with our little community. We don't have to be the biggest thing on the west coast, because I think we've got a good thing going right now. I think we all agree to that. And I think all we need is, is refine it a little bit, and add some more photobalism where people can live, and our kids can come back here. Right now, they pretty much can't, and we need to work on that. But as far as a River District, I'm not quite sure that that's really in the best interest of the town as I see it, but I'm only one person. And I want to put it out on the table, so you know where I stand. And, but again, I can be moved sometimes, but not too often, because I have Irish and Scotch.
Ernie, just, just one other comment. Although the, the Chambers Economic Development trip did go to some of those cities, they also went to Boise, and they also went to Minnesota, the Minnesota-Wisconsin line, actually. Much, much, in fact, that town was much smaller than Folsom. So there's been large, large cities and small cities as well. I just wanted to put that out there.
If I could just make a couple of brief comments, Madam Mayor, and then I'll sit down. The fact of the matter is, to your point, we also went to Greenville, South Carolina, which is almost identical in population and size to the city of Folsom. So there, this is happening in a, in a lot of jurisdictions. And with our effort, and by the way, I think Betsy brought up a great point with respect to notification to the people that participated in the effort, and certainly to the extent that we are involved in the distribution of any information along those lines, we will, we would, we would honor that request. But we had people participating in this exercise, as you know, Councilmember Sheldon, who wanted nothing done, all the way to people who did want to see some of the development, development that you're talking about. But I don't think the majority of the folks that were there were looking at anything like the River Walk in San Antonio, or huge buildings coming up to this, to the shores of the lake. But a lot of people in Folsom, the only view that they get of this, of this wonderful amenity is driving over the bridges and looking down at the water. We want to see increased access. We want to see more activities that are available, certainly activities that are compatible with the waterfront. As I mentioned a couple of times in my preserv, in my presentation, preservation is an important aspect here. And so, the, some of the features that you specifically criticized didn't fare well in our exercise in terms of support from the people that participated. The, the general plan update does, in fact, say very clearly, and we didn't, didn't imply otherwise, that the council can consider a River District. We've provided you with this report with a lot of information that you can use if you decide to go in that direction as, as a start from, from input. And we would also recognize clearly that, and we never claimed that this was a city effort, it was done by the River District Organizing Committee with, excuse me, the participation of some people who wanted to get involved in the discussion. The city is obviously going to have to go through its own exercise involving the community and the public, and making the decisions that would be appropriate from the standpoint of, of what the city would like to see done. I think that, however, it would be a great thing for our population to be able to participate in determining if they want anything done in the River District, what they would like to see, what it should look like, and, and do they want to see more access and more amenities available on the waterfront. So that's, that's my comments. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments?
Well, you know, I understand you say, you know, I have all this, I see, I hear this word used, not used enough. That term is, is, you know, not used enough by whom, for what purpose? Now, if a person wants to find their way down the road, and we have a lot of people who do walk down that river, okay, and on the, on the city trail that they made down there, a lot of people walked that, okay? But when you say it's underused, I think is a term that's used all the time, it's underused for what purpose? And when I hear commercialization ideas come up, that says to me, it's a commercial underused. That's not what we need down there. This town booms in commercial. You can do it everywhere. That's a natural, now, I know Mr. Holden is going to shoot at me pretty soon about that, it's not natural, they redid it, and they built it, and all that. I don't give a damn what it is. It looks natural to me today. Okay? And I go on what I see today. And I know there's a lot of animals, I don't argue, they had to wait until it came back to them, when we ruined it, when we dredged before. So...
We didn't dredge, Ernie. That would be the Natomas Company.
Well, I say "we" being the general...
That was even before you, Ernie.
Probably, I hope so. But, you know, it's just, I just, I'm fighting for the average little guy that doesn't know the economics of how to make money, and how to bill taxes, and all this kind of stuff. Okay? We've done well, and we have a good town. We have a lot of good amenities. We have good, low employment, good opportunities. You've got to understand, look in the mirror and say, "That's enough." Okay? That's enough. We don't have to keep adding more and more and more. And, you know, if we have to put something together that we have to bring outside people in, I know we push tourism, but that's to show off what we have, and the historical aspects. That's why you saw all the thing on the, on the high voters, you know? The Arts and Culture, and the Nature Center, and all that. That's what people want to see. We, that's the story we have to tell about Folsom. We don't tell it too well. Okay? And that's where we should be emphasizing any development on that area, and keeping the beautiful grass, trees, and the streams. That picture, the pictures you showed in the beginning really shows that lake as broad as I've ever seen it. And, and I don't kayak. If I did, I probably would have saw that firsthand. But I'm just saying that I'm not afraid of looking at it, and I think the city, and 250 is a small representation of 80,000. And I, I don't disagree with one iota about public participation in the outcome of what we do. But it's got to be upfront, honest, and don't, just not game it. We call it something, that's what it is. Okay? That's all.
Sarah?
So I do think the idea of a River District is a discussion the council should have. And, Ernie, I hope that discussion can at least start while you are still on the council, because you're a reasonable guy, and I think I'm pretty reasonable, and I bet you we could find some common ground. You know, I'm not interested in having hotels along the shores of Lake Natoma. I'm not interested in having the San Antonio River Walk, you know, duplicated here in Folsom. But as somebody who spent 15 years rowing and coaching rowing on Lake Natoma, I can tell you that the perspective, when you're on the water, looking out to the bike trail or to the open space, is different than when you're on the land, looking toward the water. So I personally happen to be 100 times, 100% in support of a boathouse on this end of the lake, because that means that we can get people on the water, enjoying the water. Now, does that then need to extend to water taxis and river cruises, you know? No, I'm not sure that it does. But I think there are some things here that we can agree on. And so I think, I think this is a discussion the council should have, and I hope you'll be around to do it, on the council still, while we do it.
Roger?
Thank you. And I don't disagree with anything that's already been said. My question is for Will. What does community outreach look like if this was to move forward? You know, right now, you have 250 engaged, but what else, how does that, how do you increase that number to actually get a bigger size of the, of the population engaged in this conversation? What's your, what's your thoughts on that with your committee?
Well, I think you helped with that. I think in June, you went out with some social media broadcasts relative to the River District as a, as an item. That got to a lot of people, and I think engaged more of them in the thought process and with respect to what their, their views on a riverfront would be. So obviously, using social media to broaden the community outreach would be, would be very good. I would, I would guess we, we focused on one location to hold community meetings. I would think that if we were going, if the city were going to do this, that the, that doing community meetings over a broader landscape would be very positive, so that we were going out to meet with people.
So you see this as phase one of building that platform, and then going out even more so with newer age technologies such as...
Oh, absolutely. We're not suggesting that you should take the input that we have and just rely solely on that. And I think we acknowledge that there are more issues to be discussed, that there's probably a lot more input out there, and we would encourage the broadest amount of community engagement in the development of a, of a master plan.
So I was supportive of including this in the general plan and having, and I agree with Vice Mayor Kino, I think it is a discussion we should have. I think, you know, you alluded to the post that I had, that hit about 26,000 folks of engagement, not impression engagement, it was about 40,000. So it was actually a pretty hot topic. What I received back was the difference between, or the distinction between the development and enhancement. So enhancing an area is completely different from developing an area. So I think what I'm getting is that that's, your, your committee's goal is to enhance the area and not develop the area. Is that correct?
That's, I, that would be a better description of what the River District Organizing Committee has been looking to do.
So much like some, some websites that promote development in Folsom show these, these, these open pastures and just luscious greenlands, right? And it's, it's a website, you'd never know that it was a website to buy a house, or in this big new development, that those open lands won't be there anymore. So that's what I got from, Betsy hit it right on the nail. From that video, you showed, you know, amazing clips of just this beautiful space that we have right now. That's one of my concerns. So I hope that going, when we go forward, that that, that piece turns more into your vision as opposed to what exists today. That's the first thing. The other thing I'm having an issue with is today, 77% of this land is not controlled by us, right? So with this plan going forward, it would still be 77% of this land will be controlled by others, correct? So we can't force others to maintain this area, right?
Well, there may be, there may be changes. The city's going to be considering some zoning code adjustments. There may be some opportunities for an exchange of lands here and there. I don't know what the future holds with respect to that. But it's not, that's not to say that there might not be some changes which would, which would shift ownership, but clearly, a major portion of the property that we're talking about. And by the way, that, those beautiful scenes were intended to, to give you a sense of the boundaries of, of what we were talking about with respect to the River District. And so, it is a fantastic amenity. I mean, it really is. And that's, it kind of demonstrates the, the attraction that, that, that kind of amenity can, can hold. But I think we're, we're obviously willing as a group to engage with the city if that's the direction you choose to go in. Clearly, the general plan update does not mandate creation of a River District. It says the city council can, as you well know, can consider a River District. Comment was made that we're gaming the, the, this whole situation. I can tell you, I'm not gaming it.
I don't think you're gaming it.
I have a concern of, that we would make use of, of what is stated in the general plan update as being an underutilized amenity. And that's really what we're trying to accomplish.
I think, I think everything your, your committee's done has been solid so far. The discussions I've had, the, the conversation you and I, conversations we've had, and your presentations are solid. I think that the outreach needs to be stronger. I think the marketing needs to be directed towards what's actually in your vision, your mission, vision value. I want to make sure that folks don't see a, a video like that and think that that's what your mission is, because it's not. You know, I mean, that isn't, you're not trying to destroy that, but you are trying to enhance that, so I'd like to see that clearer. But the, you know, deal... But the, you know, dealing with, I go back to the state agency or the other agencies outside of our jurisdiction. Right now, we're dealing with, you know, with the ride-along I did on Willow Creek, this big issue dealing with the Department of Fish and Wildlife, and getting a response back that we won't maintain or enforce our land. So we sink a bunch of money into something and we can't maintain it, or we do, you know, we put a lot of attention to something that we just simply can't maintain, so it's unusable and it was a waste. So I want to make sure that doesn't happen. I want to make sure we have control of whatever we're envisioning and that we do. So those are some of my concerns, and I think I hit all of them. Yeah, I think so. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Sarah had another question.
Well, I have a quick question for you. So, kind of along those lines, a boathouse, for example, is consistent with the State Parks Master Plan. So have you had any conversations with state folks about these ideas specifically?
Well, specifically with respect to the boathouse, we did have some conversations with State Parks. And in fact, they have put together some plans that, I think it was unfortunate that they were not coordinated with the city, but they are plans that I think will provide the kinds of enhancements that we've been talking about, where there's a project that is underway, under development by State Parks, to expand the concession area in Negro Bar to do some other improvements, bathroom improvements and parking improvements, et cetera. We did ask about the possibility of maybe modifying those plans to incorporate a boathouse type of an arrangement, and they said the plans had proceeded too far down the, down the line for them to make changes. But we have had conversations, and, you know, this is going to be, if the city chooses to, to create a River District Master Plan, it's going to be a phased kind of an approach to providing the additional amenities in, on the waterfront. A boathouse would be, as you've indicated, would be one of the, one of the first, certainly from my perspective, one of the first amenities that we would like to see in the area, because it's sorely needed up here. We have youth organizations that want to be able to access the water at the northern end of the lake as opposed to going down to the Aquatic Center near Nimbus Dam. So there's, you know, already some demand for the kinds of activities you talked about that, that I think would be very beneficial to the community.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's, I think it's important to note that, in fact, I'd be curious actually to know, was that the boathouse that was in Washington?
No, that's a boathouse that was in New England.
Okay.
We have a picture of the U-Dub Boathouse, which is a little, little larger in scope.
Yeah, and, but we were so close to it that it was hard to see the whole thing, just based on how it was situated. I think it's good that the discussion has at least been opened up with State Parks. I'm disappointed to hear, given that this has been going on for, what, a year now? Disappointed that State Parks didn't reach out and talk to the group or talk to the city about what they were or were not planning to do over by Negro Bar, because they knew that that was a major concern, and that the city's been very concerned about the condition of the parking for a long time. So I'm sorry to hear that they didn't reach out, and I'm not sure who got the letter, but I wanted to make sure that you folks were aware of the fact that I certainly got a letter, I'm guessing that all the council members got a letter, from State Parks that gave me the impression that they were undermining what I thought was the beginning of the handholding on this effort. And that also bothers me a little bit. So if the city council were to move forward with additional discussions on this, as Roger said, I'd like to see more outreach and get more people to actually show up at those public meetings, and get a little bit better participation from State Parks. And I'd like to get a feeling and a sense that they're truly on board as opposed to kind of coming in after the fact. And I don't have any, any other way to interpret that letter, is that they were trying to undermine that effort. So that bothered me a bit.
And that's one of the recommendations we made...
And I apologize, I actually meant to copy, to send a copy of that letter to you folks, and I forgot.
That's one of the recommendations we made this evening, is that that process for working with the federal and state and county agencies should be initiated as soon as practicable, so that those kinds of discussions could go forward, and there could be a collaborative effort for these kinds of improvements.
Okay. Any other questions, comments? Thank you. We will move on to our next scheduled presentation, which is the Folsom Plan Area Quarterly Update. Hey, Elaine.
Good evening, Mayor Howard, members of the City Council. This is a quarterly update that we've been bringing forward to you on the Folsom Plan Update as a way of keeping you apprised of both things that have happened over the last 90-day period and things that then logically you could expect to come over, over the near term. So we touch base on planning activities, infrastructure and site engineering map and building activity. And I'm going to work with Steve Kron to go through that information for you in relative short order. Just a reminder, this is a map that shows... What's that? Oh, thank you.
I think you should, you should have gotten some assistance from Will.
Thank you. Yeah, Will, Will, come back up and help me out with that. Thanks, Steve. Okay, so yes, this is the type, the topics that we cover each time that were before you, and again, we focus on the, the last 90-day period. This is the map that represents both the land use plan and the maps that have been approved by the City Council over the last eight-year period, essentially since the adoption of the specific plan in 2011. Over the last 90 days for planning activity, we've had two new submittals for design review, and then we have four applications in process that we've covered at previous meetings. I'm just going to highlight those two new submittals. One is for White Rock Springs Ranch, Village One subdivision, which is shown down at the, in the location to the right on the map, where it's just north of White Rock Road and just design...
So that's basically White Rock Wings Ranch?
Exactly. So this is a residential design review for a previously approved subdivision map. And similarly, for the Enclave, which is further north and adjacent to the first commercial site, the Folsom Ranch Project, this map was approved a while back. And unlike several of our smaller lot maps, at the time the map came through, we didn't have design reviews. So the council approved the small lot map concept and required subsequent design review for the master home plans, and we now have those in for Planning Commission review and action. The Planning Commission, over the last 90 days, there were a couple of activities to highlight. Planning Commission approved design review for Mangini Ranch, and as you know, at your recent meeting, you approved two map extensions, both for Broadstone Estates and Folsom Heights. This is just the, the map showing the Mangini Ranch, Village Six and Seven map area. This is closest to the existing development. You're going to see some aerial photos of that, that Steve's going to walk through when we look at site development and building permits. And these are the examples of the residential design review, streetscapes approved by the Planning Commission. And then, again, the two maps that were approved, map extensions that were approved by the City Council at your recent meeting. And with that, I'm going to turn it over to Steve, who probably doesn't need technical assistance to go through the infrastructure and site activity.
Good evening, Steve Kron, Community Development. I'll, I'll go through a series of slides, and as I always state...
Community Development IT Director.
No, no. But as always, if you have any questions throughout the process as we're going through these slides, feel free to ask me. I'm fine with answering questions during, during the course of the presentation. This is a really good aerial view. I think this was taken probably a couple of weeks ago, maybe not even that long ago. This is a kind of a overview of all the development activity that's going on out there right now. I've kind of highlighted those locations. Pam had mentioned some of the design review approvals and the houses, and those will be being constructed in some of these villages. So you can see they're all the way around, and we have some better, closer-up pictures of like Russell Ranch, so it's a little bit more detail. But that's a really good overview of the entire area.
Steve, when we do these in the future, could we actually put some street names on there? I think it makes it a little bit easier for people to understand.
Sure.
Thanks.
Absolutely. We'll move on from that one. Here's, here's Mangini Ranch Phase 1B, and we can certainly add street names on there would make, brings in clarity, clarity.
Steve, why don't you back up a slide and just kind of explain what streets we're talking about, what are the boundaries there?
Okay, to the left here, the north-south road here on the, on the left side of your screen, that's East Bidwell Street. And its intersection on the south end there is at White Rock Road. Okay, this is, this is East Bidwell Street. You see the interchange, Highway 50 up this direction. It's White Rock Road here. Right along here is Placerville Road. And then it's Eldorado County and, Eldorado Hills in the background, and then North 50 on Highway 50 there. So that's kind of the general area that we see in development. And this is the, kind of the boundaries of the development we see going on out there right now. So this is Mangini Ranch, Mangini Ranch Phase 1B, they're calling it. It's Villages Three through Seven, and that's the areas that were paved. In our last presentation, this area was being graded, but now all the villages, I think probably in the beginning of November, will all be paved. And that's the, the plan. I think, I know, I think all of them except Village Seven are paved already.
But that's going to get delayed if it starts raining?
Potentially, but not very long, because they have, they have the base in, they have the concrete in. It's just a matter of finding time to, to get it paved. So I would expect it to be paved probably in the next couple of weeks.
Okay.
This is a great aerial photo, Russell Ranch Phase One. It's surrounded by Alder Creek. This is Grand Prairie Road, I think changes to Grand Prairie Road right here. This is Alder Creek Parkway down to Placerville Road. There's the, going underneath the freeway, In-N-Out's there. So you can go up this, make this loop. The landscaping is almost done there. And if you haven't been out there, they put in a large, a lot of large trees, so it looks like they have a lot of trees growing out there already. They're 72-inch box trees, so they're pretty big. And they're, they're, looks, looks really good, really nice job that they've done with the landscaping along those corridors. So within those boundaries are Villages One through Eight. All of those maps are recorded, and it will have a slide in a little bit showing kind of where some of the home builders plan on building in here in the very near future. This is some other photos that were from the last presentation, but it kind of shows there's a respite area along Alder Creek Parkway on the upper right here. Oops, wrong way, wrong button here. This is around about the top of the hill, like we'd see in the previous photo, and this is an area, this is the pad for the clubhouse for Russell Ranch. That's under construction. The permits have been issued, and I think just last week, they poured the foundations for those buildings that are up there. And here's a view of, this is a view of Village Four. This will be, that's the I-Corp product that we've seen in other areas north of 50. And Meritage Homes plans on building models in that, that development and in the very near future, and then production shortly thereafter. Here is an overview of White Rock Springs Ranch. I'll only say that once, we just say, we'll call it White Rock Springs. And it's estimated, they are working feverishly out there. If you've been by, they've got a lot of equipment, a lot of personnel working out there, trying to finish Village One. It's noted there on the bottom. The Car Trust subdivision, that's 28 lots. And then Village Eight and Nine is, the final map for that is on tonight's consent agenda. So the final map will hopefully be recorded here shortly. But all those maps are recorded, so the, the landowners frantically trying to finish everything and get everything paved before the winter. And they're working really hard to achieve that goal. And it's, weather permitting, they should achieve that goal sometime in December. And here's a couple of photos from the last one of kind of that area, but it's changed quite a bit, and there's a lot of activity going on there right now. Here is an overview of the Enclave subdivision. You can see Highway 50 and the interchange with East Bidwell here in the bottom. That's East Bidwell. This is Alder Creek Parkway, which as you know, has been closed for several months. And they're working very hard to get that open hopefully next month. And they've had to move a lot of material from south of Alder Creek, from this general area up into here, which you can see that activity going on, several thousand yards are being moved now, so they can finish the roadway and not have to truck that material on the road, the paved roads in the future. So we're working closely with the landowners to try to get Alder Creek open sometime in the beginning of November. We're keeping our fingers crossed.
Are they just trying to balance the cut and fill out there, or...
They're, they're, they're balanced cut and fill, but what they're trying to right now, because while Alder Creek Parkway is closed, they can haul the material over and equipment that carries 60 or 70 yards material versus 10-yard trucks. And it keeps those trucks off the paved roads, which is where we'd rather not have them.
All right, is, is the pipe being done yet?
The pipe is all in...
Okay.
...along Alder Creek Parkway now. So once they finish this, moving this material across there, they should be able to start repaving, doing the furniture improvements and getting that area paved. Like I said, keeping our fingers crossed that happens here in the next month, sometime in November. Here's another view of Mangini Ranch Phase Two. It's kind of a similar photo, but you can see there in the bottom here, oops, sorry, I kept hitting the wrong button. This is the area down here where they're bringing that fill material across in here in two different locations. You can see that activity going on right now. But they've moved a lot of material over there, and I believe in the next couple of weeks, they should have most of it moved, so they can focus back. But that's a good overview of everything that's going on right now. And moving on to the next slide. This is our small, final, small lot final map activity. We updated it. I actually included on the total lots map, I included tonight's consent item, which is White Rock Springs Ranch, Villages Eight and Nine. That map should record this week. And then we have scheduled Village Six, which is in Mangini Ranch, for the next meeting on October 22nd. And with the approval of those maps, we're, we're almost to 1,200 lots mapped. And right now, we have the other villages listed on the right that are in for review and pending council approval. And so we would expect most of those to be recorded in the next quarter. So technically, we could be by the beginning of 2020, around 1,700 lots mapped out there.
You said in the beginning of 2020?
Yes. So we know we have a couple, we have map, one map scheduled in Village in November, and maybe one or two in December, and potentially another in January of 2020. This is a map we put together. It's hard to read, but this is kind of a summary. We'll, we'll perfect this for a little more, more clarity for the next presentation. But this is kind of a history of the mapping that's going on out there. The tentative maps are shown and listed in one, one column that's on the right, right box at the top. It's hard to read, so apologize for that. And then on the left are the maps that have been recorded, and they're identified by number. And the items in red are maps that have been recorded, and this will be updated as we record each map. For every quarter, we'll update it showing what's mapped and what's pending to be mapped, and those projects that have tentative maps approved as we proceed with development, construction out there. Here's kind of the building activity. What we have here, the top photos are the models for Lennar in Villages Eight and Nine. So Mangini Ranch Phase One, we've issued model, model home permits to TriPoint Homes in Village, it is Village Five, and that's the photo, photos on the bottom, the very bottom photo is the, excuse me, are the models in Mangini Ranch Village Five. That map recorded last council, council meeting, and they're under construction. We expect to start issuing the first production home permits in that village probably in the next week. And I think they have 16 applications in for production homes in Village Five. Lennar continues to work in Villages Eight and Nine, and so is Taylor Morrison in Villages One and Two. Now, Russell Ranch, right now, we know that the new home company has pulled their model home permits. That is that photo here. I believe this are the models in Russell Ranch Village Seven. The new home company hopes to have those models open to the public by Super Bowl weekend at the end of January, as well as their clubhouse.
I didn't know that was a big home selling weekend.
Well, apparently. Maybe it is. I know it's a goal... I know it's a goal, and I think that, I think they'll achieve that goal, as well as the clubhouse, trying to open it up at the same time. So we'll monitor that, and we'll have a better update for you at the next quarterly report. And Meritage Homes, as I mentioned earlier, is going to be in Village 4, the I-Corp product at the top of the hill in Russell Ranch. And then we have model home applications in and production master plans in for Anthem United. It's another home builder that plans on building in Villages 6 and 8 in Russell Ranch. And I think I have an exhibit kind of showing these locations. This is Mangini Ranch Phase 1. TriPoint Homes is in the top there. This is Village 3 through 5, which they'll be building homes. Their models are right there, under construction. This is the, we've added on here the school site and the park site for future. I think the school site, as far as we have heard from the school district, they want to have that open in 2021. And I think they'll have to get started on that fairly soon. Village 6 and 7, as I mentioned, here. I think Village 7 is close to being paved, if not already paved. And that's Taylor Morrison. Lennar is continuing to build here in Villages 8 and 9. And Taylor Morrison has Villages 1 and 2. We have a slide a little bit, kind of with the totals. And there again is an overview of Russell Ranch. And Meritage Homes is in the I-Corp product subdivision here. That's paved. Final map's been recorded. This is Village 8, and down here is Village 6 just off the screen. That's where they're going to build the models and start production here for Anthem United. And then the New Home Company's models are right, I think right here.
See, if you had the street names on there, it'd be easier.
It'd be a lot easier, yeah. The next time, for sure. Okay, and here's kind of just an overview of some of the renderings of some of those villages. And Anthem United from Villages 6 and 8. Russell Ranch, 3, 5, and 7 is what they plan. Our New Home Company will be building there. I keep confusing Russell Ranch with New Home Company. But the New Home Company is building in Villages 3, 5, and 7. Taylor Morrison 1 and 2, and then Lennar in Village 8 and 9. And that's just some of the renderings we have approved so far. And that kind of wraps up my presentation, unless you have any specific questions you'd like to ask about status out there.
Steve, so like for the New Home Company, that's active adult community, right? Is that?
No.
That's not?
No, Russell Ranch Phase 2 has an, an age restricted component to it.
Okay, well, I'm just looking at the, the, the houses there. Lot of two stories. Hopefully, there's going to be, some of these active adult communities are going to be a lot of one stories, I'm hoping.
I believe so. And I think we've, we've encouraged even on some of the other developments to have at least one option for a one-story. And I think most of the builders have provided that. And I think Taylor Morrison has, and others.
Or even on a two-story, put the master bedroom downstairs.
I would think that most of those active senior communities will in fact be one stories. It's, that's the product that sells to that market.
Exactly. All, all of the restricted, age restricted homes are single story. And then every traditional development that's not age restricted has a one-story option, with the exception of some of the higher density, single-family products.
We've encouraged most of the home builders to try to provide at least one, even in standard subdivision, community to provide at least one option or more for one story.
Two Realtors just left, but my understanding from my other Realtor friends is that single, single-story homes in Folsom are generally sold before they even get on MLS. And it's usually to older folks that are looking to get rid of that staircase.
Roger, did you have a question?
Steve, Aerojet has started to clean up Area 40, as I understand.
Yes, they have.
Has caused any problem trucking or anything?
No prob, we have not heard any problems. I think they started over a week ago. When I was out there last week, I drove by, and they have an access road off of Prairie City. And they're going to be hauling material in and out of, on Prairie City Road going north to get on the freeway, and coming back down like Sunrise or Hazel, and coming in one direction. So they're making a loop, so they don't have two-way traffic, truck traffic on Prairie City Road, for the most part. But they have started out there. They've actively removing the material. It's hard to see from anywhere because it's kind of behind a little berm, but they are moving on it. And according to their schedule, weather permitting, they could be complete with that removal of that material and replacement with better material, obviously, within the next couple of weeks.
And I'll add to that comment that Aerojet has now created a webpage with kind of tracking the schedule and providing updates as they implement their remedial action plan. And on the Folsom Plan Area website that we have here at the city, we've provided a link to that so that any interested, you know, parties can, can link to the Aerojet website to see the, the status on, on their activity. And, and then we also post these quarterly updates. I saw YK taking some pictures. All of these quarterly presentations are also on our Folsom Plan Area webpage the day or two after these meetings. So anybody interested in seeing the details can, can go to the Folsom Plan Area webpage.
Can you guys add that to, or on Facebook as well? Link that to there, from, not the website, but actually post a link on Facebook too?
We will work with our communications director.
Absolutely.
They did provide us with a full-size set of plans for the work that they are doing out there. So we do have that available if anybody wanted to look at them. They did provide us one. We have no jurisdiction over review, but they did provide us one as a courtesy, and they've been very good at providing information and updates for us as they go through the remediation process.
Very good.
I should have clarified, I wanted to see if this could be, and I think that's what you're talking about, but that on the, I had like three or four requests to see an update on South of 50, so that'd be great. I still think we need to go to, you know, this seems like it's moving pretty fast, which is good. I mean, for us, you know, that means the economy's not, not going anywhere. We're still.
Right.
You know, pumping along. I think the 20-year timeframe is probably, I don't, it doesn't seem like that would be accurate. I think you were looking, correct me if I'm wrong, but maybe like eight or nine years, if it stays consistent?
Right now, based on, based on the number of houses that have been sold, 1.2% of the houses have been sold. So that tells me it's going to take much longer than 20 years, if they continue at that same rate. Just because something's mapped doesn't mean it's, that it's built. And the infrastructure on the western portion of that site, none of it's there.
Okay.
Has not started yet.
I guess that was just something I'm just, I'm just looking at. It seems like it's going pretty fast. I'd like for us to take in consideration and look at our affordable housing and new fee process and policy before this stuff, you know, gets even bigger. I'd like to see us bring that back to the council, so I don't know if you can take note for that.
That's, that's a different question. That's for agenda, that's not community development issue.
Well, it's part of this. I'm just saying, as, as a note, I'd like to say that on the record, I'd like to bring that part back, but thank you.
Any other questions?
Good presentation.
Well, thank you, Steve. Okay, with that, we will move to the consent calendar. Would anybody like to pull anything from consent?
I'll move adoption of the consent calendar.
You have a motion, do we have a second? Do we have a motion and a second? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Aquino? Gaylord?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Ish.
And Howell?
Yes. That moves us to Item 8A, new business. Resolution authorized the city manager to execute a lease assignment, assigning a land lease agreement between the City of Folsom and the Folsom Eldorado Sacramento Historical Railroad Association, Inc. to the Placerville and Sacramento Valley Railroad for the use of the Y property. Hi, Mark.
Good evening, Mayor, members of council, Mark Rackevan, engineering manager, Public Works Department. Just a real brief introduction of the item. Since 2005, the city has leased the area known as the Y property to the Folsom Eldorado Sacramento Historic Railroad Association, known as Feds, for their use for storage and light maintenance of rail equipment and for their operations of excursion rail along the Sacramento-Placerville transportation corridor through town. That lease has been amended on a couple of occasions to expand the area that they lease, to include the station master house, to incorporate a list of the rolling stock that they have on site, and then just to continually renew the lease. Feds now is trying to transition away from excursion rail. Actually, the Placerville and Sacramento Valley Railroad Group has taken on the excursion rail for several years. Feds is focusing on the historical aspect of railroad in, in town. So we all know Bill Anderson operates the Railroad Museum over there in the.
Our hero of history, who's sitting in the back of the room.
That's correct. And so they're focusing on the historical aspects of rail in town. And the PNSVRR will continue to do the excursion rail through Folsom and into Sacramento and El Dorado County. The item before you this evening is to transfer the current lease from Feds to PNSVRR. One point of clarification, a distinction between what's in the staff report and the actual action being requested of you this evening is PNSVR will simply assume the current lease, which is currently about halfway through term. It, it would expire in 2021. At that point, then, we would bring another item before the council to renew that lease for another four-year term. So this evening, we're just asking you to assign the lease to PNSVRR, and they will play it out for the next two years.
But that doesn't guarantee anything that will happen into the future. I just want to clarify that.
Correct.
They may decide they don't want to be there.
So contingent with that, there are several pieces of rolling stock that PNSVRR would like to add to their inventory, and thusly, they would be added to the inventory that's in the lease agreement. This includes a couple pieces of maintenance equipment, one of which is a tamper, and the other is a regulator. They do have some issues with one of their engines right now, and so they are bringing in a replacement diesel. And they have a great opportunity to bring a steam locomotive through a, a loan. It's not actually owned property of theirs, but, but the owner is willing to allow them to use this steam engine for their operations. They also have a line on a trolley car that's currently sitting over in Sacramento Regional Transit's warehouses, and they can bring that out and, and use that in their operations as well. In order to protect those two last pieces of equipment, the steam locomotive and the trolley, they are asking to, to erect and construct a storage shed that would sit on a portion of the track and would become a secure facility to store those two pieces of rolling stock. And I think that covers the majority. That's, that's everything we have for you this evening. If, I know that Jim Harville and several members of his team are here, if you have any questions for them. But if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer them right now.
Any questions for Mark?
Yeah, I do. So I, I don't have any problem with transferring the lease. But Mark, I'm just, you kind of touched on this, and that was one of my questions. I'm, I'm wondering about the language because the second-to-last whereas says, whereas the term of the lease shall be four years from the date of execution. Wouldn't you say that we're executing it tonight? Or maybe from the date of the original execution? Or it seems like there's.
I, I think we're just assigning it so the date of execution will go back to the original signature date.
If I may assist Madam Mayor and Madam Vice Mayor, my, my proposal is, should you wish to pass and adopt Resolution 10338, is to modify the six whereas from the current language to whereas the term of the lease shall be until November 29, 2021, which is the current expiration date of the current lease.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
I will move adoption of Resolution 10338.
Do we have a motion, do we have a second?
With the recommended.
With.
Language, yes. Yes, I'll second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Aquino?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Ish.
And Howell?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, Mark. Thank you to the PSVRR guys in the back. We will now move on to, actually, we're going to convene the Joint City Council Successor Agency, Public Financing Authority, Folsom South of 50 Parking Authority, and Folsom Ranch Financing Authority meetup. If the clerk will call the roll, please.
Councilmembers Gaylord?
Here.
Sheldon?
Here.
Aquino?
Here.
Howell?
Here.
And Kozlowski is absent.
And we have consent calendar?
I'll move adoption of the consent calendar.
Second.
Do we have a motion and a second? Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Aquino?
Yes.
Gaylord?
Yes.
Sheldon?
Ish.
And Howell?
Yes.
And we will adjourn the Joint City Council Successor Agency, Public Financing Authority, Folsom South of 50 Parking Authority, Folsom Ranch Financing Authority meeting, and reconvene the city council meeting. And we will speed on to the city manager report.
Hello, everyone. I'm sure you've all been hearing on the news and throughout social media about planned PG&E outages throughout the state. Although this will not directly affect Folsom, our fire chief has been in regular communication with El Dorado Hills Fire Chief and the South Placer Fire Chief regarding possible power outages in El Dorado County and Placer County. We can expect to have some additional visitors at our hotels and accommodating others from our neighboring counties over the next two to five days. So we will continue to be good neighbors and supporters for those that are affected.
Elaine, can I just add to that?
Please.
That there's been a whole bunch of chatter on social media that people seem to think that this is also going to affect the City of Folsom. We are not a PG&E electric service area. We are a SMD electric service area, and these, these proposed outages will not affect the City of Folsom.
Correct, other than helping our neighbors.
Right.
We are, we have put the final touches on our Proposition 218 mailer about the proposed utility rate increases. That is at the, being designed and headed to the print shop. We expect it to have it in the mail by the end of October, out to all property owners citywide. Once you receive that mailer, if you have any questions, you can go to our website dedicated to this issue. We will also have a community meeting on November 6th over at the Community Center for, for you to learn more and, and get your questions answered. This Thursday, Folsom is updating, it's, we're having a zoning code update workshop as we are in the process of updating our zoning code. And so this public workshop on Thursday, October 10th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at City Hall will focus on zoning code as it relates to the historic district. Trees are a treasured asset in Folsom and have widespread benefits to the community. The City of Folsom's Tree Preservation Ordinance provides a framework to preserve and protect Folsom's trees. A public workshop to discuss the Tree Preservation Ordinance will take place at the meeting of this city council, the next one, at 6:30 p.m. on October 22nd. And finally, the Folsom Veterans Day Parade is accepting entries. Thousands will honor local veterans at the 19th Annual Wayne Spence Folsom Veterans Day Parade on Monday, November 11th. The parade is held rain or shine and begins at 9:00 a.m. on East Bidwell Street in front of the Target Home Goods Shopping Center. And the city is accepting parade entries through Friday, October 25th, and applications can be found on our website. And that's all. Good evening.
Thanks, Roger.
Yeah, just a couple of things. One, met with the, I don't know if anyone recalls, but the last council meeting, we had the first Lego League. We had the two gals up here speaking on that, so I met with them. It was actually really incredible to see what they're doing with Legos. And it's not just like you're building Legos. It's more or less actually building things to solve issues and using coding to, to program the Lego. So it's the first step and a next level for First Lego. But they have a competition on November 13th at Theodore Judah, which I recommend everyone go check out. It's actually pretty phenomenal to see these, these young, young kids looking at, they're actually looking at community issues and looking at solving problems with these, so it's pretty cool. I was at the SYF Cheer Champions, and my daughter's a junior Vista Eagle, and two of the teams took first at the championship, so that was great. And then important, October 24th at our SAC Airboard, the Airboard meeting on 708th Street, they will be taking action on the proposed per capita fee. So that, that meeting starts at 9:00 o'clock. If you want to say your piece and, and discuss this with that board, please attend. Again, that will be October 24th at 708th Street. With that, I am good.
Ernie?
All I want to say is thanks for all the support, everybody. It's good days and bad days, but I'm still here. And I want to just piggyback a little bit on the Veterans Parade. A few days ago, the number was around 2,200. A few days ago, the number was around twenty-two hundred so far participants, which is pretty good. So if you haven't applied, you don't, you want to participate, be sure you get in on it. Pull the application off and get it in. And anybody wants to donate to the funding or the snacks afterwards and all that, they can do that through this contact, the Folsom Methodist Association will help you.
Sarah? Just the usual warning about driving carefully, red lights apply to you. And I'm actually going to throw something out. I don't know what police department thinks about this, and I'm thinking about actually contacting the school board, but, and this was in part prompted by my having a kid go flying across Flower yesterday when the middle school was getting out. Some kids on bicycles and other kids that were crossing the street waited for the light. And then as people started to ease, you know, ease into the lane to turn right onto Blue Ravine from Flower, other kids just came flying across the street. And I think maybe we ought to have a little bit more effort in the community to get kids to understand that they too have to follow the rules of the road. So I just.
We can work through our school resource officers to help.
Yeah, I think that, that might be helpful. I don't, we've got, we have, welcome to the chocolate fish folks that moved into the Bel Air store last, was that last Thursday? I think so. Our next meeting is the twenty.
Second.
Twenty-second. I don't know what other things are going on in the city in the interim. Seems like maybe we have like a little bit of a lull for a couple of weeks, except for the brews and the, and the cornhole thing. But again, other than that, please, everyone drive carefully. It's getting dark much earlier now. If you're out at night, wear clothing so people can see you. And let's get Sacramento region off of the worst drivers in the state of California sooner rather than later. With that, we are adjourned at eight oh two.